Stand up. Regain composure and open your eyes. Because there is everything to be gained. This is a fight. A fight against the tyranny of the subconscious. Against enslavement by the mind. Which mandates that you take the path of least resistance. How long does one need to be cornered, stagnant, or overpowered before they fight for what belongs to them? Before they take what is truly theirs? Imaginary limits, make-believe inadequacy, will soon be a thing of the past. Soundly defeated. This is not a negotiation. This is war. As fear takes the form of bullets, pain transforms into fire, and your world becomes chaos. Remember, that what lies ahead is much more valuable than what is left behind. When you are tempted to fall back and fade away, look up at what can be. And take what's yours. Storm the hill. Keep your eyes fixated on the prize. Sacrifice is an understatement. Indestructible confidence is a necessity. The enemy is not behind you. It's in front of you. It's fighting for the status quo, and its fight is in vain. You are armed. Armed with the desire for more, to be better, to not just exist, but to make the world wonder how you did it. Yes, this is war. Winner take all. Stay still or move forward. Settle or chase down what you really want. Yesterday doesn't matter. Last month doesn't matter. Right now matters.
Good evening once again. You heard on the video that this is where we begin. As we said, this is war. Is war on education? Is war on trying to ensure that every student in the Port Arthur Independent School District is successful? To the Board of Trustees, my team members. I want to thank them tonight for their support. And they do support me individually, and they support this district. And tonight, I want you to give them a round of applause for everything that they do. There's one thing that we have in common. That no matter what the conversation is, no matter how deep it becomes, one thing for sure is that student success is the main thing all the time. We agree on that. That our students must be successful. The Port Arthur Independent School District has embarked on a five-year plan. A roadmap to which we are to travel in order for our students to be successful. And it is going to take every individual in this community to help us. The Port Arthur Independent School District cannot do it alone. It is going to take parents. It's going to take community individuals to come out and support the students of Port Arthur. Yes. We have challenges. And we've heard over and over that Port Arthur can't do it. The Port Arthur Way or the Port Arthur Children. Our children are great. Our children are terrific. Our children, they're ours. And we hold a responsibility for their success. Yes. We admit, they come to us with challenges. We admit that. But I do say that each challenge that they come with, it is not their fault. Because they are students. I don't care if they're 18, 20, 21. They're still students. They're children. And they deserve all of our energy. We had a meeting this week. And we asked the question, how do we get our teachers to teach our students with the love and energy that they would teach in other districts? How do we get the teachers in Port Arthur ISD to love our children? Not because the parents are there every day. Or because they know parents will come and they're supportive of their children, so they do what's right because they see parents every day. But how do they love the students that parents are absent? How do they love the students that are discipline problems? That have Asperger's? That are ADHD? How can we get our teachers to come to school every day and work with the students of Port Arthur Independent School District? And yes, we have had a reality check. And yes, during our five meetings, we have been faced with things that we have heard and we know, but we tried to have a deaf ear. Yes. The Port Arthur Independent School District is made up of Hispanics and African Americans. And the African American students in this district, and Hispanics in this district, deserve the same type of education that every other student deserves in the United States of America. And parents, we need parents. We need you to insist that your children be taught with the same rigor, the same passion, and the same love as every other student in the United States of America. Yes, our students are challenging. However, they're ours. And education is the key to success. It is the key. We need parents. We need community individuals to come and support every child. Not just your child, but every child in this district. The Board of Trustees insists that it happens. And they talk to me constantly about how we're going to do it. And I agree with them that we must. It is time out for us being lax. For us being liberal. And as one of my cohorts says, for us being accommodating. We accommodate to too much. We accommodate everything. We allow things to happen in the Port Arthur Independent School District. And it's time out for allowing things to happen. That is why 70 of the most brilliant, enthusiastic individuals of parents, teachers, students, and community individuals came together. And they discussed how they wanted this district to move forward. The question was asked after this plan has been implemented, how are students to act? How are parents to act? How is this community to behave? We should want what's best for every student in this district. And it is up to us to make it happen. I want to thank the Texas Education Agency. They have been wonderful in providing the support in monetary funds. All of this came about through a grant. And they allowed us to work with four of the most magnificent individuals from Region 5. In the way of Dr. Deborah Brennan, Dr. Roz Evans, Mrs. Robin Carpenter, and, not Carpenter, Mr. Ms. Roz. Roz Evans, Robin Carpenter, Summer Southall, and Mr. Blaine Carpenter. Blaine came to us during the last meeting. And he was magnificent. And he wanted to come back tonight and tell you a little bit about the process before we move into the strands. There are six strands that you'll hear about tonight. Six strands that we're going to embark on. Our last meeting consists of how we were going to measure. How were we going to assess the plan? The plan must be assessed. And it can't be just put on a table and left to do it itself. So every semester, we're going to look. And we're going to hold people accountable for the education and the success of our students. And that is something that we've missed. We've allowed things to happen. Yes, we thank this track team for moving on and being successful in spite of. In spite of, they are still successful. We thank the three young ladies that are here for the poster contest. They have been successful. We have students that are going to be successful no matter what happens. But what about the students that actually need us? That need our attention? They deserve it. And we are asking our parents to help us. We cannot do it alone. We're just asking parents to be parents. We're just asking parents to make sure that their children are fed. Make sure your kids have something to eat when they get home. Make sure your kids have a home to come to. Get up in the morning. Don't lay in the bed and wait for them to get their siblings ready. Parents get up and get ready. Help their children get ready. Make sure they have their homework. Make sure that you've told them something that "I love you." Do you have your homework? Are you ready for school? That's all we're asking. And I'll ask one thing of parents. Don't come to us with an attitude that we're the fault. Because we are not. Yes, there are challenges. And yes, you deserve to ask questions. But I think it is time that we work together. Because all of us are in it for the children of the Port Arthur Independent School District. I will ask Mr. Carpenter to come forth. And he'll tell you how we came about the plan. And he'll tell you a little bit of how we crafted it.
Good evening, y'all. Glad to be here.
Good evening.
The rest of the team from Region 13 couldn't be here tonight. But they're here in spirit. They send their love. This community made such an impact on us. A quick story. We travel around the state and we facilitate these strategic planning processes. And usually, the district sends out about 50 invites. And about 25 community members show up. And here in Port Arthur, the district sent out about 50 invites and about 80 people showed up. And then on the first day, we do a little icebreaker activity. And most places we go, we give the folks five minutes or so to introduce themselves and talk to each other. And after about two minutes, we're ready to move on and get to work. But here in Port Arthur ISD, after the five minutes, the conversation just kept rolling. You all are a family. And it showed in the work that you put into this strategic plan. So as Dr. Porterie said, the leadership team identified six focus areas for the plan. And then in our first meeting, those 80 folks came together. And based on the community values and the district's vision, they start to identify some targets. And then in the next meeting, some content experts in the district identified, now how are we going to reach those targets? Let's put together some action steps. And they put that plan together. And those were long, hard days. Those were long, hard. I see people shaking their head. They remember. And then after that plan was put together, the whole group came back together to put their stamp of approval on it. And then we had a follow-up meeting, as Dr. Porterie said, to make sure we put some measurements to this plan. So there can be accountability and we can impact student outcomes. Dr. Porterie, do you want to introduce the strand groups individually? Or how would you like to proceed?
We were going to come up and introduce.
Very good, very good. I just want to say thanks again for the hard work that you put into this plan. And we at Region 13, we are so excited to see where y'all go.
Thank you. I do want to thank the executive team for their work. Now, they have a lot of work to do. But they did stop and they sat. And those meetings were eight hours a day. So I do appreciate their time and energy. And I know in the back of their minds, they were thinking about other things that they needed to do. But they did stay with us. I'm going to ask that Dr. Williams come up. And I think she's going to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Porterie. Good evening, Superintendent, Board President, and Board of Trustees, community, parents, and students. I'm Ella Williams, and I'm a member of the team for the five-year strategic plan. I'm excited this evening. Because you're going to hear some life-changing information for our students and the community. You will understand why I say that it's life-changing as we proceed. Why should you and the community care about this five-year plan that we're going to present this evening? After this evening, you will know that Port Arthur ISD is poised for greatness. That means high-quality education and opportunity for all students in the audience. We have students here tonight. They're our children. They're our future. I'm going to ask the students in the audience to stand. They have some flags with some different careers. We appreciate those students. Those students are going to be provided a quality education right here in Port Arthur ISD. They're going to go far. Thank you, students. You may be seated. Now, Dr. Porterie mentioned about the five meetings. You may say, all of those meetings, does it really take all of that? It takes all of that and more. Such action as this can annihilate the school-to-priesten pipeline. And I'm sure that you've heard that term before. We can give students and parents their dreams for the future. And some have abandoned those dreams due to the circumstances. What parent, what educator, what trustee or stakeholder wouldn't support such a plan as what we're going to provide and show you tonight? I dare say not a one would stand against it. We believe it appropriate to preface our five-year plan with commendation for our leader, our superintendent. Dr. Porterie, for his forward thinking. In other words, he's a transformational leader. He's one who created the vision. He shared the vision. And then he motivated his team to achieve the vision. We're embarking on this journey together with the community. He was courageous enough to bring together the community, the Board of Trustees, parents, students, and employees all under one roof to give input and to provide direction for this district. We would like to acknowledge his executive team that stands with him. If you want an on-target plan, organized, easy to follow, see the early college high school overseer. He brings his A-game every time. That's Dr. Melvin Getwood, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Getwood. Let's put something in place that will propel our students to the literacy level where they need to be. That's the lady with the jumpstart program, Dr. Kim Vine, Chief Executive Officer for Elementary. Involve the students. They are the benefactors. They shared input into the five-year plan. Ms. Robin Beatty, Chief Executive Officer for Secondary. Our fund balance is in good standing thanks to this lady's expertise, Ms. Phyllis Jeans. My observation is that we have personnel to support this action. None other than Mr. Jimmy Wibley, Director of Human Resource. For your vision, Dr. Porterie, because the true value of a leader is not measured by the work that they do. The true value of a leader is measured by the work that they inspire others to do. You motivated us to think long and hard, to ask questions of each other, to question ourselves, to toss ideas back and forth. And out of that, this five-year plan was born. Now, our five-year plan must grow and develop under your leadership to provide a quality education and opportunity for the dreams of our students and the dreams of our parents for their children. And to be productive citizens for our community. We appreciate your vision, Dr. Porterie. We know that our superintendent is very reserved. And he's not about much fanfare. But I believe it only fitting for this superb plan that he has created and shared and provided for the district and for our students. I think we need to just give it up for Dr. Porterie if you all would give him a hand. Thank you, Dr. Porterie.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
At this time, we will proceed with introducing the strands of each plan. There were six strands. And we can... Culture and climate? Well, you can use this. You can use this microphone up here and stand in this corner if you want. Look and see how much I can pull right there. You see that?
It takes a team of educators to figure this out. Good evening. And I'd like to thank, our team would like to thank the board members, Dr. Porterie. We'd also like to thank the trustees and all the stakeholders here tonight, our students. We're so glad you're here as well. And we are the Culture and Climate Team. We consist of executive members, board members, teachers, administrators, mothers. We even had students on our team as well. And they were an intricate part of this planning. They really gave us a great insight from the student's point of view. We have worked hard. And we would, at this time, like to introduce ourselves. I will start off, first of all, with our facilitator, Ms. Robin Beatty.
Good evening, everyone. Robin Arsenault Beatty, Chief Academic Officer. We're glad to be here tonight.
Amanda Dai, Elementary Social Studies Curriculum Supervisor.
Carmen Hudson, At-Risk Supervisor.
Brittany Holmes, second grade teacher at Terrell Elementary.
Maria Ferreira, first grade bilingual teacher at Terrell Elementary.
Lisa Chambers, Principal of Terrell Elementary.
Emily Moore, Special Projects.
Donald Frank, Pastor New Hope Baptist Church.
And I'm Joanna Moore. I am a pre-K teacher at Dowling Elementary. We are here tonight to discuss with you about the Culture and Climate strand. These are two different types of strand, or two different types. Culture and climate are different. Climate is based on the attitude of the district and the campuses. And culture is created where there is a collaboration and communication. Communication is the key in all relationships. We're here today to see how we can meet the needs of our students by discovering how we currently communicate within PA ISD and our community. We have developed plans in our strand to survey stakeholders in PA ISD, monitor ways of communication, evaluate how each campus is receiving information in a timely manner. We want to make sure that every campus in PA ISD receives their teachers, their, all the staff, everybody involved, receives information that's needed to make our district work so that our students will have success. Also, we want to make sure that all new teachers that come into our district receive training that they need. And we want them to receive that training also in a timely manner. They may need it right before school starts. They may also need it three months after school has been in session. They may need it three years from now or 10 years from now. We want to make sure that we can come to our board, come to Dr. Porterie and say, this is what we need at this time. And we know in the past that everybody's been very generous with being able to train us. We just want to make sure especially that these new teachers don't feel incompetent. We want them to feel that they can be successful in the classroom because we know that that will directly impact our students. So we want to make sure that that is happening. So at this time, I'm going to give it over to... Okay, Ms. Hudson. Thank you.
In order to achieve this goal, we have come up with strategies. And in our first strategy, which is to align district-wide system that cultivates college and career readiness, from pre-K to 12th grade, we will have an emphasis on college and career readiness. And in order to do that, we will research and implement a district-wide care-to-education program. For we must instill in our students traits of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, careness, and citizenship. Martin Luther King Jr. stated it best that "one day, people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." Today, in 2017, we're still waiting for that day. So it's very important that our students, beginning with our tiniest titans at Wheatley Elementary, we instill those traits in those students up until those young men and women when they walk through the doors, throughout the doors of Memorial High School. A compliance committee will be formed to ensure that district-wide programs and implementation, district-wide program implementation and procedures and policies are consistent. From one building to the next, we want to make sure that our policies and procedures are consistent. Because throughout the district, we have mobility. And when students transfer building to building, there should be consistency. The transition should not be a difficult one. Everything should be aligned. And to achieve any desired success, our desired success of any program, guidelines must be set and adhered to. One building can't do it this way, another do it that way. We have to set some non-negotiables that it will be done this way in Port Arthur Independent School District from building to building. So we're going to set some non-negotiables throughout the district to assure success of all of our programs, policies, and procedures. We will look to you, the community, parents, teachers, students, to review our progress. So we'll send out surveys for you to evaluate how well we're doing with the programs we implement. Once you let us know how we're doing based on your response, we will, as a committee, evaluate, revise we will, as a committee, evaluate, revise the policies, procedures, and programs as needed.
Good evening. It's nice to look out and see so many familiar faces, especially those students that keep waving to me from the back. Makes me relax a little bit. To us, our strand is the most vital element of the district. Creating a successful climate and culture in our schools, it's an emotional task. It's more of work from the heart. It's not necessarily a set of rules for us to follow or a budget for us to balance. It's more about checking ourselves on our behavior. How is it that we want to work with each other? How is it that we want to treat each other? Our second strategy focuses on how to address the culture and climate for members of our team, those dedicated individuals that work with their students every day. After a lot of brainstorming with our group, we collectively agreed that the very first step we could take is to try to improve our relationships among our team members. Our plan includes three main actions... Three main actions that will help improve communication, starting with the communication from the top. Nobody likes to be the last person to know about what's going on in the district. So we'd like to create like a virtual grapevine, so that information gets it all the way down to the bottom, makes its way down. Next, we discuss the importance of PLC meetings. These are those instructional meetings for our teachers, where that critical discussion of how their instructional strategies are taking place in their classroom takes place. So we'd like to be able to establish norms across the district to make sure that the teachers have the most optimal growth during those discussions. Lastly, we looked at the collaboration between vertical and horizontal teams. That's talking about more of our teams among our grade levels, as well as our teams on our campus, but also developing relationships with other campuses. We do have several sister campuses, which shows some development toward that idea of working together. But we'd like to sit down and have a more formal plan of how we can help each other be successful, so that not just one campus is seeing success among their students. In closing, please remember that climate is the quality and the character of what it feels like to be within our school walls, whereas culture is that way that we all work together. It's how we... we and you and all of us feel about our students' education, that value that we place and our belief of its importance. Our strategies answer two questions. How do we change the way our students feel when they walk into our schools? And also, how do we want our staff and students to develop a relationship that's going to build a positive and successful student? If you're on any kind of social media, you have probably read the quote, "Every successful relationship must have three Cs: communication, compromise, and commitment." Our action steps reflect all three of these. Thank you for your time.
Good evening to everyone. To the PAISD School Board, Superintendent Dr. Mark Portery, Administrative Team, colleagues, parents, and students. We are the District Operations Strand Team. My name is Joe Johnson, and allow me the opportunity to allow my team members to introduce themselves to you.
Good evening. I'm Clover Bolden. Not only am I a proud teacher in PAISD, but also a proud parent of a little Titan.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Jeans, Assistant Superintendent and CFO.
Good evening. Deborah Cartwright, Director of Special Education.
Good evening again. Ella Williams, Supervisor.
Louis Reed, Community Representative. The goal of District Operations Strand is that the PAISD will provide sufficient resources necessary to create an environment to support student success. Our objective is by 2022, that 100% of PAISD campuses and departments will have sufficient funds necessary to effectively operate. Our strategy, our first strategy, was to develop a plan to find alternative funding sources and identify ways to increase revenues. This is the money part. District Operations Strands... The District Operations Strand, excuse me, as well as the other strands, are to provide our stakeholders, which includes our students most importantly, with a safe and secure environment that creates an atmosphere conducive to learning. The Port Arthur ISD will only succeed in achieving this mission by effective... by the effective use of resources, efficient procedures, open communication, and the dedication of our employees. Departments that are affected by this District Operations Strand, child nutrition, energy management, transportation, maintenance, custodial workers. Our strategic plan sessions have set the pace to constantly reevaluate policy and procedures to meet the needs of our children and those who work for them to provide a quality education. Fall 2017, we want to increase the number of free and reduced lunches in terms of the applications being totally completed by parents. I would like Ms. Jeans to allude to that.
Okay. The reason that it's so important that we increase the free and reduced child nutrition applications is because we have several fundings, grants, that we can receive as a result of the number of students that are qualified for free and reduced lunches. For example, our Title Program, our Compensatory Education Program, we receive almost $10 million from the state as a result of the number of students in need in our district. If we receive less of our applications, we receive less monies from those sources. Additionally, we receive dollars for our E-rate grants.
Thank you, Ms. Jeans. In 2018, we will also... How many of you have a Facebook page? Using multimedia to get the word out about the various strategic plan efforts that we are going to accomplish or try to accomplish. In 2019... Spring 2019, increased funding sources through grants, the selling of excess property that the district can actually sell off to businesses that are trying to relocate in the area or to even... or even housing. Student attendance as well. In spring of 2017, one of our action steps was... is to pass a tax ratification election. In that process, want to organize a steering committee, identify district needs by doing a budget analysis, and, most importantly, inform the community for the reasons why we need this. Strategy two, strengthen the district-wide plan to evaluate the use and implementation of our current resources. Spring of 2017, want to evaluate campus and department human resource needs by analyzing positions and job descriptions, create awareness of an employee attendance, explore alternative solutions, and evaluate the use of substitutes. Fall 2017, to evaluate efficiency of utilities. Fall 2019, compare PAISD expenses to comparable districts. And fall 2020, analyze options to reduce costs, lease versus purchase, in-sourcing versus outsourcing, and standardization. With standardization, it's simply making sure that everything is aligned. I remember when Mr. Jackson, the Technology Director, first started in the district, he went around to each campus to ask what software programs were needed, were used by teachers. And they were to... they were able to develop a list, and I'm quite sure of the software. And I'm quite sure that helped to save the district hundreds of thousands of dollars because that streamlined some of the software packages that were not being used or being used by some teachers. We thank you for allowing us to give you this information, and we hope that the board grants us the opportunity to go further with this. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karice Mitchell, and I'm currently a math teacher at the Port Arthur Alternative Campus. And I'm going to let my team introduce themselves before we get started.
Good evening. I'm Lola Higgins, and I'm a special education teacher at the Port Arthur Alternative Center.
Good evening. I'm Katie Porter. I'm a kindergarten ESL teacher at Lucian Adams Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Angela Valk. I'm a first-grade teacher at Lucian Adams Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Diana Alexis, and I'm representing Travis School. I am the grandparent.
Good evening. I'm Irene Getwood, second-grade teacher at Washington Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Shayla Myers, Content Mastery Aid at Lee Elementary, and I have four little ones who also attend at Lee Elementary.
Good evening, Lawanda Penny.
Good evening, Lawrence Getwood, representing Lincoln Middle School, Dad's Club President, as well as Washington Elementary, Second Vice President of the PTA and City Council, PTA Board Member. Thank you.
I had a wonderful team, and we really had a great time working on all this information. We are the Family and Community Involvement Strand. I'm going to quickly go over our goals and our objectives. So our goal was that Port Arthur Independent School District will partner with the community and provide availability of inclusive resources for greater family and community engagement. Our objective was that by 2022, 100% of Port Arthur Independent School District's students, parents, and community members will have access to various communication modes for engagement. And I want to stop for one second because 100% is very important to us. We no longer want to celebrate when 300 parents come out if we had 1,000 parents that could have shown up. So our goal is going to be 100% of parents. The poor ones, the rich ones, the involved ones, the uninvolved ones, the smart kids, the not-so-smart kids. We want to involve 100% of parents. So that's going to be our goal, and it's very important that we stress 100%. And then our strategy is going to be to expand and promote district-wide communication systems for all students, all parents, and all community members. So I want to tell you what our plan was and what we came up with to do. But before I tell you what we're going to do, I want to take a little time and talk about why. I want to tell you why we want to do this plan, why we worked so hard for five meetings, why we spend eight-hour days working together. I want to tell you why. So there's five reasons why. Number one and most important is our students. We care about student success above all. We want better test scores, we want better grades, we want lower dropout rates. But we care about the students not just academically, but also personally. We want to see more confident students. We want to see students who are proud to be in Port Arthur. We want to see students who can brag about the things they've learned, about the teachers they've had. So we want to see personal and academic growth. The second people we want to influence is our parents. We want parents who are also proud, who are also on the same page with us. If parents don't know what's going on in our schools, when someone says, "What's your child learning?", they say, "I don't know." All they know is that we called them this week and said that Johnny was doing bad again. So we want to encourage our parents to get involved so that they know what's going on. We came up with a little phrase. We talked about, "We want to decrease punishment and increase the positive reinforcement." If parents only get called when their child's misbehaving, all they can do is punish that child. But if they know the plans in the classroom, they know the plans in the school, they can get out in front of it and reinforce their child positively. And they can say, "Don't forget today, you guys are talking about shapes, geometric shapes. Get ready for that." So the parents will be on the same page. So we're talking about students, parents. Thirdly is our educators. We want to increase the morale of educators. If the educators know that when they have a conference, the parent's already on the same page, the parent's already coming to support the parent, our morale is up. We have more respect in the community, more respect in the schools, more respect among each other. So we want to influence the students, the parents, the educators, and then the school. When a child says, "I go to Terrell," or "I go to Lucian Adams", we want them to clap and cheer like that. We want them to clap and cheer because we want to be proud of our schools. So we want to have the community involved and the parents involved so that we can be proud. And then lastly, we want the community itself to be proud. When I say, "I just moved to Port Arthur," I want to be able to be proud of that. I want people to cheer like, "Oh, you just moved to Port Arthur? That's great. I want to move there too. I heard about the great things that are going on." We want to have five-fold influence on our... with our community involvement. So now that you know why, we're going to get into what we're going to do. So in spring of 2017, that's coming up, that's right now, what we're going to start doing is analyzing the communication modes we already used. We're going to look at the email system, the phone call system, text messages. We want to see what are we using and what's working. We think that emails are probably going to be the best way to go. So at this year, at the one-stop registration, we're going to try to sign up every single parent that comes through the doors with an email address. If you don't have one, let us sign you up for a free one today. So we're going to try that first. Next, over the summer as well, we're going to just collect data again on all the methods. We're going to ask the parents with a survey, "What do you prefer?" We don't want to be emailing you if you prefer a text. We don't want to call you if you prefer an email. So we're going to talk to the parents and find out what is working, what do you prefer? And then we're going to start, in fall of 2017, training the staff. If we find out that... we have a program called Remind that text parents. If we found that's what parents prefer, we need to start training these teachers on how to use that in the classroom for, you know, for growth. Next, we want to, in fall 2017, we want to evaluate that. If we start using email, we want to see, is that working? If we're using Remind, we want to say, is that working or not? Then we're going to start promoting. We're going to promote those at what we're going to call Family Nights. We all have those once or so a year, maybe twice we have a family night. We want to start having them every six weeks, so parents can know, what is my child going to learn? Do they have new teachers? Are there new people in the classroom? We want the parents to be involved every six weeks, so they can stay abreast of what's going on. And then we're going to start compiling and merging these ideas. We're going to start making mail mergers with email addresses. If Remind is working, we're going to start merging those phone numbers together so we can start using the strategies that we found out are working. And then we're going to start incorporating the new modes that work the best. And then finally, we're going to start informing parents of which ones we're using so they can know, be checking those emails we just made you that summer. Make sure you're checking the forms we're telling you are working. And then, over the next five years, we're going to just start reviewing because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if emails are going to stop being used. We don't know if there's going to be a new form of communication that comes up. So we're going to just review every year to find out, is there something new that we can start using? Is there something old that we need to throw out? So again, don't forget our five reasons, the parents, the students, the educators, the community, and the schools. And we want to start involving everyone so that we can have 100%.
Now, the next group is literacy. And we want them to tell us how we can get every student in the Port Arthur Independent School District reading and reading for comprehension.
Good evening to our distinguished board, our illustrious Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mark Portery, my special colleagues and special guests with us this evening. We represent the Literacy Strand, and we are thrilled to be in your presence this evening. We are a team of individuals totally focused on achieving district-wide and community-wide reading and writing proficiency. And at this time, we'll do... And at this time, we'll do brief introductions. My name is Kim Vine, I serve as Chief Academic Officer for elementary schools.
Carolyn Brown, Secondary Supervisor for ELAR.
Naomi Knowlton, Program Facilitator for the Multilingual Department.
Monica Henderson, Pre-K Inclusion Teacher at Wheatley School of Early Childhood Programs.
Perla Castro, Bilingual Pre-K Teacher at Wheatley.
Yadira Cárdenas, and I'm a parent and a community representative.
Kathy McEwen, I'm the District Coordinator of Testing.
Carla Obregón, Bilingual ESL Migrant Supervisor.
Carol Baker, Content Mastery at Travis Elementary.
Good evening, Rhonda Calco, Elementary English Language Arts and Reading Supervisor.
Good evening, Dishanta Ben, Texas State Teachers Association Organizational Specialist.
Good evening, Marissa Phillips, Kindergarten Teacher at Dowling Elementary.
Ruth Ryan, ABU Teacher at Washington Elementary and Representative for PATA.
And we'll go ahead and get started. Let's take a moment and remember when. When you first opened a book, the smell of crisp paper, the feel of a smooth page, the bright white contrast with the colorful illustration, and from your mouth, you uttered your first unassisted red word. Celebration deep within your mind, joy, success, a recognition of your infinite abilities, and that moment a reader was born, a lifelong learner created.
We firmly believe that strong literacy skills form the basis for learning in all subjects. Therefore, the Port Arthur Independent School District will implement a comprehensive literacy program that addresses, fully addresses, the diverse needs of our students and equips them with the strong literacy skills necessary not only for success in school, but for success in life. This is our goal. By 2022, 100% of Port Arthur ISD students will demonstrate proficiency or above in reading and writing.
Good evening again. We have a vision with action steps to change the state of literacy in our district. Jole Baker said, "Vision without action is merely a dream. Action without vision just passes the time." But vision with action can change the world. Our district needs to develop a systemic approach that involves all of our students in a guaranteed and viable literacy program to ensure they reach their optimal potential. To do so, we need to establish a representative committee for the planning and oversight of a viable literacy program in our district. The Representative Planning and Oversight Committee will begin evaluating the current state of literacy in the district and conduct a needs assessment of current literacy practices and programs utilized across the district. We believe that the most critical function of this committee will be to design a district-wide literacy framework which includes non-negotiables, which we currently do not have. The literacy framework will include, but is not limited to, equity literacy, the five components of reading, phonics, phonemic awareness, comprehension, fluency and vocabulary, and in addition, 21st century technological infusions for literacy instruction. In the fall of 2018, we want to begin implementation of the literacy framework district-wide. For every year thereafter, the Representative Planning and Oversight Committee, in collaboration with all district stakeholders, will monitor, evaluate, and revise the literacy framework to ensure that all of our students are guaranteed a viable literacy program to reach their optimal potential.
Our second strategy was to reach our objective that by 2022, 100% of our students will demonstrate literacy proficiency necessary to be successful in any post-secondary pursuit, either college or career. We need to create a professional development system which ensures that all teachers, new and experienced, are competent and highly skilled to deliver effective literacy instruction. Beginning in fall 2017, the Representative Planning and Oversight Committee, in collaboration with the Curriculum and Instruction Strand, will be responsible for researching and evaluating the most effective literacy professional development to guarantee that teachers are prepared to deliver effective literacy instruction. In addition, this committee of stakeholders will collaborate with colleagues, universities, educational service centers, and other professional development organizations for maintaining knowledge of current trends in literacy instruction and staff development. We also plan to support 21st century technological integration for effective literacy instruction. Each year thereafter, the Representative Planning and Oversight Committee will evaluate, revise, and plan the most effective literacy professional development to ensure that our district is meeting the needs and supporting the growth of new teachers and experienced teachers.
President Harris Truman said, "Readers are leaders." All of the students in PAISD have the potential to be leaders today and tomorrow. With a strong literacy program, we can create the kind of leaders in this community, in this state, and indeed, in this nation of which we all can be proud. Our committee has the big challenge of ensuring that 100% of all our students are literate and able to function at their highest potentials. We will work diligently to fulfill that task with your help and support. Our main strategies, as you have heard, are good instruction and reading/writing proficiency, and secondly, effective illiteracy staff development. The literacy framework spoken of will be the core guide for our literacy journey. Over these next five years, we plan to see these three things soundly arise. Reading at high levels and writing well are absolute musts. All of the learning hinges on it. Literacy forms the background, a backbone, of the entire learning system, the foundation on which all other subjects and learning rest. Frederick Douglass said, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." We want 100% of our students from PAISD to be free, free to learn, free to choose, free to be the successes that they should be, and literacy is the key. Thank you for your support of this literacy journey.
Next, we'll hear from teacher quality.
We are the Teacher Quality Strand Team and I'm going to allow my team members to introduce themselves.
My name is Richard Kuhn, I'm a community parent and grandparent that's fully supporting everything that we're doing and accomplishing through this five-year strategy.
Good evening, I am Azaneth Buwan, Math Teacher here at Memorial High School.
Good evening, I'm Melanie Puzz, the Secondary Science Supervisor.
Good evening, sixth through eighth grade teacher at Lincoln High Middle School.
Good evening, Makisha Bezil, Secondary Math Supervisor.
Good evening, Nala Bezil, I'm a junior here at Memorial High School.
My name is Ricardo Celis, I am the Pan Immigrant Community Liaison for the Multilingual Department, and I had the pleasure to work with this marvelous team on the Teacher Quality Strand. We believe that teachers are one of the most important assets of our district because education matters. It is the key to solve most of our challenges in life. What will education be without teachers? We want our teachers to reach their highest potential, to be the best that they can be. We want them to have a competitive salary and we want them to feel happy and proud of being part of PAISD. All this will reflect in our students. They will also reach their highest potential and will become leaders, lawyers, doctors, hopefully teachers, but most importantly, good citizens. Our goal, PAISD will attain, retain, and cultivate qualified teachers by developing an environment conducive to the advancement of education. Our objective, by 2022, 100% of teachers will be certified and demonstrate competency in their specialized content areas.
In keeping with our goals and our sub-goals of obtaining and retaining and cultivating our teachers, we have three strategies, one aligned to each of those goals. Our first strategy is to develop a district-wide promotional plan to recruit certified teachers. And we're going to accomplish this by developing an advertising campaign committee. We're going to, right now, the process is usually having local job fairs and teachers who are graduating from universities will come and look and see, "What do you offer?" And so, some of that, we're going to bring it up a notch, you know, with modern technologies and stuff. We have, we discussed it as a group and we found that we have an outstanding resource here at Memorial, that we have the CATE, C-A-T-E, the Computer and Technology Education Department, and they have students in there that know how to work these computers, these marvels of science, the social media, you know, internet and all that kind of stuff, much better than any of us my age can accomplish. And we can utilize them to help develop a multimedia campaign, something that we can put on the road and take to places, to the universities, take to the local job fairs, and have it play and show elements of not only Port Arthur School District, but Port Arthur area, what interests, you know, fishing, hunting, what other people might have outside of teaching, to recruit these talented people. And by, one of the side benefits of having our teachers put together, I mean, our students put together such an excellent product would be that they can go forward in their careers or their college or whatever with that on their resumes and, "I not only didn't work and put together a multimedia campaign with photography, videography, all these elements of it that are, you know, top-notch, and they can be something, they can be proud of and put it on their resume." Also, as we're bringing in teachers and they're recruiting them, their candidates for employment here, we can show that, that this is what our students are capable of. You know, we have outstanding students, they're capable of just, you know, shooting for the moon. And if you want to come work at Port Arthur Independent School District, you better come with your A-game.
As a former teacher, I can tell you that first years of teaching are not easy. In many cases, teachers are overwhelmed, and that's why we want to give our new teachers all the support that they need. For our experienced teachers, we want to give them new tools and opportunities to improve their skills. We also want to take advantage of our experienced and talented teachers by asking them to share their expertise. Our strategy number two is to develop a district-wide teacher support system. We will organize a committee for teacher professional growth, assess your current mentoring program, select mentor teachers, mentor candidates, launch a teacher support system program, develop a professional learning platform group, organize a recognition and reward program, review and revise the framework of the teacher support system, evaluate mentor effectiveness, conduct global research on mentoring programs, implement, update a teacher support system program, and finally, continue the review and revise the framework of the teacher support system program.
Our third strategy is in line with cultivating our teachers. Once we've got them in the system, we want to grow them and improve their abilities and, you know, give them resources to accomplish that. And also, you know, anything that's dealing with their own personal career interest, that will help to keep them and retain them as a part of Port Arthur Independent School District. So our third strategy is to develop a district-wide advanced education program to assist with career interests, including bilingual opportunities. And we're going to accomplish this by, first, we're going to organize a committee and we're going to get feedback from the teachers, find out what is their, what are their interests. We have an interest from the school district, we want to help that teacher become a better teacher to teach our students, but some of the teachers have aspirations to go maybe get a master's degree, maybe pursue their PhD, some may want to go into administration and be a principal. So they have their own interests, but it has to be aligned, of course, with the school district's interest of being the best teachers they can be. In order to do that, we're going to do some surveys and find out what their interests are and see if we can come up with a plan and a strategy to do that. We recognize too that we have valuable resources right here with Lamar University that can come and do workshops on better teaching skills, you know, to help them keep improving their teaching skills over the years, and also pursue that advanced degree that they want right here locally at Lamar. And also, a little strategy, I worked for 37 years as a chemical engineer in the chemical industry, and we had a lot of programs to save money, they would, what we call Teach the Teacher. We would send one guy to a program and he would come back, or he or she would come back and teach the other members of the team what they had learned, and that way we could disseminate the information, a little cost-effectiveness, you know. So we have lots of ways we can do these things without really spending a great deal of money. And, but we off, we obviously recognize that there's going to be some funding required, and so we're going to collaborate with district operations on funding and bring all our proposals to the administration, to the team and to the school district to get approval. We recognize, maybe we won't get everything the first year, but we really, really think that we're going to have such a success that when we come back the second year, they're going to be very happy to give us anything we ask for. So we'd just like to thank you for your continued support of the teachers of Port Arthur Independent School District.
Last and certainly not least, curriculum and instruction.
I am Katie Whitehead, Elementary Math Supervisor. This is my wonderful, helpful, supportive team that we worked on curriculum and instruction. We're going to take just a moment to introduce.
Hi, I'm Rita Laje, Elementary Science Supervisor.
I'm Kirsten Thomas and I'm the Parent Representative for Adams Elementary.
Tatiana Owens, Bilingual ESL Director.
Jermaine Jackson-Ades, Fisher at
Jermaine Jackson-Ades, special ed supervisor.
Hello, Marlene Cole, fine arts supervisor.
Christina Smith, ESL DeQueen Elementary.
Joanne Compton, content mastery, Lee Elementary.
Carissa Guidry, second grade teacher at Lee Elementary.
Melvin Getwood, assistant superintendent.
So when we're looking at building a new school system, we're really looking at some very hard and intense work. We're looking at building towards a vision and a mission that we've all discussed here tonight, but in essence, building the school system the way we want it is a lot like building a new house. When we're building a house, there are several things we need to consider. First, where do you want to build your house? What neighborhood do you want to go to? Where do you want to live for the rest of your life and raise your family? This is much like looking at the community involvement and the culture and climate that we've discussed earlier. We need to secure a home loan and a mortgage. Hello, district operations, all money, 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 money. We need to make sure that the crew that we hire to build our home is a quality crew so that our house is sturdy and well-constructed, much like the teacher quality portion that we had. We need those quality instructors to make sure that our house is a good, sturdy, strong house. However, when building a house, in order to truly make your house a home, you have to fill it with substance. Empty houses are not where we want our children to be. We envision our kids to come to a home with a personal connection. We want their home to have a lasting memory. Our curriculum that we build, that's our substance. The instruction is that personal connection that they have to make a long-lasting memory. So our long-term plan is to ensure that PAISD will provide a challenging curriculum that is implemented daily by quality instructional staff, and that by 2022, 100% of PAISD students will be taught using a vibrant, challenging, engaging curriculum that will ensure they are all college and career-ready upon graduation.
And that brings us to our first strategy, which is to develop a comprehensive and inclusive curriculum in PAISD to address the unique educational needs of our students. Earlier, we referred to a blueprint, which is basically a picture, and if the big picture is not clear and concise, your home will have major flaws. Here at PAISD, we want the best quality picture possible. We will conduct a needs assessment and evaluate the results to make sure curriculum is comprehensive at all grade levels and addresses each individual student's needs. We will select curriculum committee and writers, ensuring there are representatives from each school as well as representatives from all grades and subjects so that no one is left out or behind. We will plan professional development. We want to make sure all teachers are aware of goals and expectations as well as prepared to implement them. Part of making sure we have the best possible picture is making sure all pieces of the puzzle We will develop a curriculum format, creating uniformity, ensuring everything is aligned, adding to that cohesive picture. Implement staff development plan for instructional staff, conduct quality assurance visits, and we will also conduct teacher walkthrough observations. All of these things help us to ensure the curriculum is not being watered down in the classroom and material is not slipping through the cracks. We will review and adjust implementation of curriculum, including quarterly meetings as well as visiting selected districts to learn from their successes, helping our picture to be the best. We will keep what works and strategically abandon what is found to be ineffective. We will review, evaluate, and revise curriculum documents. This will include reviewing TEA news releases for changes, additions, and mandates to the state curriculum so that staff can be updated accordingly. This will be done regularly and continuously. We will plan and provide staff development. We want the transition to the new goals and expectations to be as seamless as possible. Change can be difficult for anyone. Our goal is for everyone to be on the same page so that our picture is not only the best but crystal clear as well. For those who are familiar with technology and the way the quality of TVs is evolving, we are upgrading from a fuzzy pixelated picture to a 4K picture, which is the best. And it's hard to be the best if you don't know what it is or what it takes to achieve
So, we're going to build a house, but it doesn't matter how beautiful your plans are, doesn't even matter how much money you're willing to spend on your house. If the workers who come in every day and build the house are not competent, if that happens, our house will not stand. Strategy two of curriculum and development deals with the workers, the people who build our house, our teachers, the ones who meet our students every day. To ensure that PAISD has a strong instructional program, we will evaluate our present program, meet with our students to find out what they see going on in the classroom every day, and what ideas they have for us to better meet their needs. We will work as a professional community to share ways to improve our instruction. We'll plan and implement and evaluate professional development that addresses teacher and student needs. We'll visit classrooms to observe instruction taking place. We will continually evaluate how our curriculum is being implemented. We'll evaluate the materials we use with our students, and we'll make changes wherever we're needed. This then is how you build a house. This is how you build a home. This is how we put our five-year plan together, and we appreciate the time to share it with
Let's give another round of applause to all six of our strand and our committee members. I would like to personally thank our committee members. They work tirelessly, and I just heard one board member say, "You have a lot to monitor." And I'm thinking, yes, we do. But one thing about it, we're not afraid to work. When you come to Port Arthur, you can't be afraid to work. And we, and we will. We will work to make sure that it happens. And there was another piece, the monitoring piece that I spoke of earlier, and we must monitor this entire plan if it's going to work, and that is something we're going to do. I want to thank one of the board members, when she heard about the plan, and she said, "You've got a lot to do," and we were talking, and she said, "You know what, during this, we're talking about summer school," and she said, "Wait a minute, the kids have to have something to have fun to do after you all do all this work." So I'm going to let her talk about a little bit about what she, what she has done to help us with our summer school plan in order to help us to have a little fun with all of this work.
Thank you, Dr. Porterey. It's not much, and it's not actually from me, it's from everybody, but on behalf of myself and the Board of Trustees, I was in contact with a company a few weeks ago, and they were offering free bowling games. And I talked to them, and they were very gracious, and they have supplied our entire summer school program with two tickets for every student to go bowling, free of charge. And that would be at the...
Max Bolt.
Max Bolt, here in Port Arthur. And the principals will have that at summer school. So that's just something to say thank you from us, the Board of Trustees.
Okay, board members.